Roll call, please. Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Losi.
Here.
Councilmember Stanfield.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Trent.
Here.
Mayor Long.
Here. Thank you, Buffy. Welcome to our second live meeting for a very long time. It's really nice to see faces in the audience. It's nice to be here in person. And I would just like to take a moment of silence right now to remember Chief Bill Roverstein and the 25 years of service that he gave to the City of Fortuna. Thank you all. All right, we have a presentation tonight. Proclamation for our dispatches, who are such a vital part of our police department. City of Fortuna proclamation and recognition of National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 10th through 16th. Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and public safety dispatchers are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services. And whereas public safety dispatchers are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from citizens who telephone the Fortuna Police Department Communication Center. And whereas the City of Fortuna is served by a group of men and women working as public safety dispatchers for the law enforcement, fire, rescue, and medical emergency response agencies in this community. And whereas those dedicated individuals work tirelessly to answer our citizens' calls for help and dispatch the first responders to the scene of these emergencies. And whereas these public safety dispatchers have demonstrated loyalty, commitment, and dedication in the performance of their duties. Now therefore be it resolved that the public safety dispatchers working in the City of Fortuna are a valuable asset to our community at large. These professionals who toil with little recognition 24 hours a day, seven days a week, to save lives and provide assistance are unsung heroes. Be it further resolved, it is for these reasons that the City Council of the City of Fortuna wishes to honor them and proclaim April 10th through 16th, 2022, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in the City of Fortuna. The City Council of the City of Fortuna appreciates their commitment and dedication to their profession and congratulates them on a job well done. Signed, April 4, 2022, City of Fortuna. Who is accepting this?
Our communication center is a vital part of our police department. We currently have four full-time communications dispatchers, public safety dispatchers. We have one part-time public safety dispatcher, and we currently have one vacant position. Currently, our dispatchers, it's a hard job. Our communication center is much different than the other ones in the county. We deal with fire and law enforcement. We deal with Riodale Police Department, Ferndale Police Department, our own police department, and we deal with the Fortuna Volunteer Fire Department, and we dispatch for them. The one thing that makes our communication center stand out from the other ones is I have some awesome dispatchers that work for us. They're very dedicated. Right now, they're working mandatory overtime because of one dispatcher's out on family leave, and we have the vacancy, so they're working mandatory overtime now for the near future until we can get a spot filled. They work in there by themselves, 12-hour shift, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Somebody calls in sick, somebody steps up. They work well with each other. They don't complain that much, but, you know, we all complain. So I really am honored to be their supervisor and to be considered the supervisor for our communication center, and without them, none of this would happen for our police department or for the Ill River Valley. So I'd like to give them a round of applause for all the hard work they do for us.
Thank you. Our next item is oral comments from the public. If anyone has anything they wish to comment on that is not on our agenda, now would be the time to address the council. You have three minutes. Seeing everybody rushing up at once, tripping over each other and everything else, okay. We will close public comment and move on to our consent calendar. We have four items, including city council minutes, report of dispersments, authorization to award the contract for the wastewater treatment plant percolation pond rehabilitation project for 2022, and appointment of city manager as negotiator for city cell tower lease site. Does anyone wish to pull any items? All right.
Move to approve consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. All right, our next item is a discussion of the Fortuna Business Improvement District. I think Merritt's going to open this one up.
Yeah, just in the way of introduction, so a couple council members expressed to me interest that this be put on the agenda after hearing from members of the public who wish to express their opinion. The count, you know, and I think the primary topic that members of the public were interested in are the recent EPID, the draft EPID audit finding results. And I will just say that the city's received the audit and its findings in draft form. We have not yet, I have not yet had a chance to review those in detail with council, so that is something that we will be looking at as we move forward and working to determine how best to address some of the concerns presented in the audit and move forward in the best way possible for the city. So again, the council can't take action on this item, but if any members of the public do have something they want to share, this would allow a discussion format, even though action is not going to be taken on this item tonight.
So yeah, just to reiterate what Merritt said, we've all probably read the audit findings. We just haven't had a chance as a council. This is our first meeting after it was released last week on the 30th to get together and go over what is in the findings and to figure out the best path forward. So with that, if anyone from the public wants to address the council on this item, please be respectful and let us know how we can best move Fortuna forward. No one? Okay. Does anyone from the council have any comments at this time?
At this time, no.
Okay. Well, more to come after we have had a chance to review everything, and we will keep everybody in the loop. All right, we will close the discussion portion of the Fortuna Business Improvement District and move on to city council business. We have the first reading and public hearing to consider amendment of the Fortuna Municipal Code regarding state mandated procedures for SB 9 urban lot splits and two-unit projects by amending Title 17 zoning regulations of the Fortuna Municipal Code, Chapter 17.09, state mandated procedures in Title 16 subdivision section 16.04, .070, urban lot splits, and this is ordinance 2022-752.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, so this is returning to you as a regular ordinance that would be incorporated into the municipal code. And you did see it as an urgency ordinance in, just in January. So we've had time to take a regular ordinance to the planning commission, and they did make a recommendation, and that's in your staff report. And so just as a brief refresher, SB 9, if you recall, allows housing developments containing two residential units on one lot. It's different from the accessory dwelling unit ordinance that we have adopted. You know, that was another state mandate, but we have that set of standards for ADUs. This is specifically SB 9 standards. So it allows two units per lot and also lot splits. And those are without a discretionary review or a public hearing. So that's a big difference for, you know, what would be a minor subdivision in lots as small as 1,200 square feet. So, and then cities may adopt local ordinances to implement the provisions of SB 9, adopting and also may adopt objective zoning standards, subdivision standards, and design standards, as long as they don't conflict with the provisions of SB 9. So on the overhead, it's just the schematic that you've seen at the previous meeting. It's just kind of a refresher, you know, that demonstrates existing single-family unit. And then basically, this kind of demonstrates the impact on single-family lots. So two units per lot, and then after the split, there could be four units on what was previously a single-family lot. So, let's see, I think I have the... I thought that worked this afternoon. Oh, turn it on. Thanks. There we go. So the, and this is just a quick summary of the SB 9 regulation. So again, two units or adding a new unit to an existing unit. Minimum unit size, 800 square feet, that's minimum. And these are the state regulations. Minimum setback four feet, no short-term rental permitted, Airbnbs, maximum one parking space per unit where previously the code would require two, and no owner occupancy requirement. And for the lot splits, minimum lot size 1,200 square feet. The lot would need to, couldn't be divided to greater than a 40% to 60% split of the area of the lot. Cannot be re-subdivided after a lot has gone through an SB 9 subdivision. No off-site dedications or off-site improvements are allowed within certain limits. Can't require correction of non-conforming zoning conditions. And then for the lot split, there is a mandatory owner occupancy for three years, and an affidavit gets recorded. So just the background, this shows the process that we've gone through. Beginning in January 1st was the Senate bill took effect, and then on January 18th, the council approved the urgency ordinance based on health and safety issues. So that was, took effect immediately. Planning Commission held a workshop, was presented with a workshop shortly after that to, you know, kind of move them forward through this and help them be familiar with it. And then we did bring the, their ordinance recommendation, staff report on February 8th, and they did make a recommendation that the council adopt what's before you tonight. And then that brings us to the council's ordinance. So the urgency ordinance standards, this is what's in effect now. This is obviously very brief. I think these are the main points. It allows a unit size of 500 to 800 square feet, so it caps it at the state's, the state minimum. This becomes Fortuna's maximum. ADUs are not allowed on any SB 9 parcel. It does establish the setbacks of the base zone. There are certain findings that can be made that would allow the forfeit that the state requires. And then off-site improvements are allowed where required specifically for health and The planning commission changes to the ordinance that you saw, or the urgency ordinance that you adopted in January. The planning commission does recommend some changes. And that includes, really, these are clarifications, I think. There aren't any, you know, drastic diversions from what you adopted. These just kind of help clarify, and, you know, for the purposes of implementation. Lot access, it does just clarify that accessways must meet the size and development of the, you know, the municipal code and the improvement standards and specifications. So it ties, you know, the lot access to specific standards. And then setbacks, setbacks, that code section is our, what we did was add building coverage. So setbacks and building coverage are the two, you know, site development standards that are in the code. So this just clarifies that building coverage, the code for building, the standard for building coverage would also be implemented. And then the front setback is clarified. And then parking, again, it just ties the municipal code parking standards to site Let's see, which one is this? So additional changes, setback again, so the previous was for the two-unit, no, this is for two-unit development, sorry. Let's see, no, the previous one was for the subdivisions. This is for the two-unit projects, right?
Yeah.
Sorry, it's kind of hard to have the slides behind me. Again, this is just repeats what was under the lot split section. And then, but it also adds design standards, and these are pretty basic. It does, for a site that's already developed, it requires the second unit to match the primary units in building materials, windows, doors, et cetera. And then for a vacant site that has not been developed yet, the two units would need to match architectural style. And then if a garage is converted to a new unit, which the code allows, the SB 9 allows, the garage door opening would need to be replaced with, you know, exterior wall coverings that match existing architectural features of that site. So really, it's just, the purpose of that section is to help the new units blend in with the neighborhood and not be, you know, really prominent or, you know, just to help for compatibility with the neighborhood. So other standards were considered, and this is really for your information, there is not a recommendation on these standards. The purpose of presenting these is really to just let, you know, you be aware that other cities, you know, some of these I got were, you know, were found on other cities' ordinances. So it's just kind of, you know, wanted to present a range of other issues that could, you know, that are out there and would be feasible if, you know, if that was the approach that anybody wanted to take. So, for example, the maximum size, so right now, the maximum size of the unit would be 800 square feet, but, you know, there's always the option, or what other cities have done is allowed larger units based on either the size of the parcel. Oh, well, the first example is if the setbacks and the building coverage and other zoning and other standards are met to allow a larger unit or compare, you know, comparing it to the existing home or the size of the lot. And then the same with the maximum height. If all of the setbacks are met, then an extra height would be allowed. Right now, the ordinance is similar to the ADU standards. So there's a cap of 15 feet for the building height, but for SB 9, there is no option for a taller building. So it's capped at 15 feet. And then the other example shows the size of the unit increased based on either the number of bedroom units or, and/or the size of the lot. So for example, a lot that's greater than 15,000 square feet would have a larger unit. And then other standards that are out there, you know, potential other standards would be more detailed, either architectural style or, you know, I've seen really detailed design standards, whereas the, you know, typical for Fortuna, I think, just to general harmony rather than dictating the type of, type of the style. And then some cities do choose to have affordability requirements based on a range of factors. It could be types of the units or the location of the units, and then identifying a level of affordability, and that could be, or based on a percentage of the number of units that are proposed. And then these next two slides are just tied to the city's accessory dwelling unit standard. So again, there's the example of the height. There could be an entrance orientation requirement, you know, based, orienting the second unit towards the center of the parcel. And then privacy standards, in this case for the ADU ordinance, second units that are within eight feet of an interior or rear property line would be required to have screening. So it could be a six-foot fence or translucent or clear story windows. And then second-story decks and balconies would need to be set back 10 feet. So again, staff isn't, and the planning commission didn't choose to pursue these further or recommend adoptions. It's really just for your information, kind of a disclosure kind of a thing. So that's all I have. The staff recommendation is to adopt the ordinance, and it also would adopt a finding that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA, which is actually established by SB 9. So the state chose to make that an automatic exemption, and also repealing this ordinance that you adopted would repeal the urgency ordinance and replace it, or not replace it, but then adopt this ordinance. So that's the first reading, and I'll hand it back to the council.
Thank you, Liz. So when we're talking about the building coverage, are we talking about these smaller lots could have more than a 35% coverage, which is the standard for the rest of the city, on the 6,000-square-foot lots? You can only cover 35% of the lot? What are we doing with small ones?
Well, the, with the SB 9, the state law, it doesn't specifically mention building coverage. So the only, the only standard it specifically exempts is the setback to four feet. So we added the section that kind of clarifies, well, the city's standards are to be, you know, the setbacks are to be implemented, but then there's another section that kind of gives direction on if, and this follows SB 9, if an 800-square-foot unit could not be built, then because of the setbacks, then there would be an allowance. So it kind of gives the city some authority, but then it does defer to the state's four-foot setback. So by adding, you know, by clarifying, that process would also apply to the building setbacks, that they, that they would be implemented. But then, you know, could be waived if there was no other way to build at least an 800-square-foot lot or a unit. So that's why building coverage got added, because without that standard, there would have been no guidance, and it would have been harder to implement, more confusing.
So we're trying to meet our setbacks, but in meeting the setbacks, you can cover whatever portion of the lot that is left?
We're trying to meet the setbacks, yes. That's what we would implement initially, and then, you know, through the design and just the review process, if there was no way to construct an 800-square-foot unit, then we would have, you know, there would be some negotiation, I guess, on what, you know, what's, what would, what could be allowed, what could be constructed on that lot.
Okay. Anyone else have questions?
Yes, several. Go ahead. Well, we've mentioned before that this is simply the City of Fortuna trying to gain control over the little bit that SB 9 allows the city to take in SB 10. I really appreciate the job that the planning commission has done in reviewing this and handing down the proposed amendments. I know it's, that was not an easy job for them to go through and make these recommendations to us, just dealing with SB 9 in and of itself is a headache. Going back to the privacy impacts that you had on your slide, are those impacts the ones that we have amended? I know you mentioned that it wasn't something that the planning commission wanted to take up, but is that something that we've amended, or is that something that was handed down with SB 9?
We, those are the other standards that were considered but not incorporated.
Okay.
So they're not a part of SB 9, but SB 9 does allow objective design standards, just like the ADU ordinance. That statute, you know, the state law also had that provision that, so our ADU ordinance does include those privacy standards.
Okay.
For those, that set of objective design standards. But those have not been incorporated into SB 9.
Okay, I understand that. But we can make those changes to the Fortuna Municipal Code by ordinance later.
Yes.
Okay. And then the other standards on your slide showed 1,200 square feet, where I believe the ordinance holds it to 800?
Yes, that's correct.
And so again, if somebody, or if the council wanted or staff wanted to present it, we could make those changes down the road if necessary.
Yes. If you find in the future that the 800-square-foot maximum is too restrictive, say on a, you know, a one acre or half acre or a larger lot, then definitely that's something that would, could be amended.
And going back to that, then the lower amount would be 500, from between 500 and 800 square feet?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Chairman. Would you mind going back to the first slide?
The very first one.
It was the diagram of the different options. Right there. So on the middle unit, how is this different than an ADU? Or the middle example?
Yeah, it's, it's very similar. The middle example is very similar.
Okay. With SB 9, are they going to be required to include sprinklers?
I don't remember if sprinklers, for the ADUs, it...
Does not.
It says if, if it's required for the main residence.
Right, so...
So on a new construction.
A house built in 1980.
Right, that would just apply to a new construction. So if you have, if you're constructing the main residence and the ADU at the same time, that's when sprinklers would be required.
And then regarding the three-year for owner occupied, how are we going to monitor that?
It's challenging to monitor occupancy, that's for sure.
Yeah. And then with that, regarding them, you know, having to monitor or whatever, there's no way to prove, is SB 9 going to have something recorded against the deed to say that an SB 9 lot has been created and now can't be additionally subdivided?
Yes, absolutely. That's, that's in the code.
It is?
Yeah, the deed restriction, including the affidavit that, or the, you know, the standard requirement of owner occupancy. So it's really informational, you know, it's a disclosure to buyers, and it just puts the buyer and the owner on notice that those are required.
But it would be in like a preliminary title report, so somebody wouldn't be shocked?
Yeah.
And then the next slide? No off-site requirements? Does that mean like you don't have to put a sidewalk in if there wasn't, isn't one already there?
That's right. That's what SB 9 intends.
Okay. And there's no onsite parking requirements either?
There is a one-space requirement.
One space?
Per...
Per unit?
Per unit, yeah.
That's all my questions. Thanks.
Mike?
On, I went to a League of California Cities meeting, and there was a legislative update talking about a bill that's already in place, moving forward through the legislature in this state, to amend ADU regulations to where a 24-foot height limit would be in place for ADUs instead of the 15. Have you heard anything amongst your fellow planners about that or community development organization?
You know, that hasn't actually come across. I haven't heard it discussed, no.
That would have a big impact on people in a single-family residential neighborhood with all of a sudden perhaps your sunshine in the afternoon going away, or even with translucent windows, the windows are up there looking down at you, whether they can see through them or not, it's still invasion. So I'm just wondering if you'd heard anything about that?
No, I don't have anything to add on that.
I like the privacy part in place. Gives a sense of at least your backyard is still your backyard.
Yeah, no, definitely both of those, the ADU and SB 9 have the potential to... Yeah, no, definitely both of those, the ADU and SB nine have the potential to really impact the density, the built density of a neighborhood, which is, you know, why we've tried our best to create some of these objective standards.
Thank you.
Anything, Kimmy?
My question's on the setbacks. Uh, let's, somebody builds a, a two-story house with a six-foot setback, can they put a, a deck that goes further than that, or does the outside of the deck have to be six feet back?
Um, you, so on an SB nine, um, that, so the zoning code does have a, um, an encroachment into setbacks for decks. I believe it's three feet into the, so, uh, for the SB nine, a deck is optional, so it would not be allowed to be one of the encroaching, you know, components of a structure.
So does that mean it couldn't be built up to a foot from the fence, or?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then what about when you have the four-foot setbacks? How far can the roof hang over towards your neighbor's property?
So the, um, the city, so the zoning code defines it as the wall. Um, I know the building department defines it as the, the eve, the edge of the eve.
Okay. So the four-foot setback would be the edge of the eve?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So did I understand right? I don't see it as the privacy requirements are not included in the ordinance?
They have not been included.
I actually would like to see those included now. Can we do that? Or would that mean this can't be the first reading and we have to start over again?
I believe that means that we would go back to the planning commission. That would be a change.
Yeah, that would need to go back to the planning commission for further study.
I think that's something we'd have to tackle down the road.
It just seems silly to tackle it down the road when we can just get it right the first time.
I don't know that we can do that tonight.
Well, we can't, that's what I'm saying. It would have to go back to planning commission and come back to us again.
You know, I would note that the urgency ordinance would remain in effect this entire time, so the regulations would remain effective. It'd just be a matter of when the ordinance adopted, then in the normal course would become effective. So going back to the planning commission for further study on additional aspects of the ordinance that the council would like to see, does it mean that we're going to be without regulation on SB nine for that interim period of time?
Of all the things that I think are important is privacy for the existing homeowners, the adjoining landowners, and I think by leaving that out now, it's just a big gap. And then if we don't immediately go back and somebody builds one, now you've lost that opportunity and everyone lives with it. I would just like to see it done in the beginning, but I'm one of five up here, so.
I, well, I, I know that it, it would be better to tackle all these issues at one time rather than piecemeal, but also I understand that the planning commission tackled this in the best way that they can, and now to, to, for us to ask them to go back and look at the privacy, um, impact here, then I think it's very appropriate. I think we should be able to do that.
I think it's important that we build it all in one piece instead of just a scattershot approach.
So that's what I would like to do. I'd like to send it back one more time. Do we have time to get it on an agenda before our next council meeting?
Um, you mean before?
Too short a timeframe, it'd be like two council meetings from now?
Yeah. I think it, my sense is that it would be appropriate and, you know, I don't want to say welcome, but I think it would be appropriate to take it back to the commission and not, I don't think there would be any issues on their part to consider that. And we, yeah, we'll just make it work. It may take, it would take two council, you know, you wouldn't get it back at the next council meeting, but that, I think that's fine, like the city attorney said, you know, we still have some standards in place.
And would you have recommendations or suggestions that the planning commission look at specifically, or just what she had?
The ones that were on this slide was, that seemed appropriate for me, but if you have more stringent ideas, then that's fine, too.
Yeah, I'll take another look through the ADU and collect all, you know, all of the design standards that were, I mean, that's pretty much it, but I'll just take another look and make sure that they all get specifically analyzed.
So if that is what we want to do, what would our motion be then?
At this point, the council can just move to table this, to send it back to the planning commission, uh, for further study. And the planning commission would have, you know, somewhat carte blanche authority to make additional recommendations, both on the privacy aspect and anything else that they'd like to revisit, and it'd come back to your council in the form of a resolution with further recommendations.
Incorporate the privacy recommendations into the motions, table it, to send it back to the planning commission for further work on privacy.
So is that your motion?
Yeah.
I second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to send ordinance 2022-752 back to the planning commission to add more detail regarding, uh, privacy, and then anything else that they think might be pertinent, and then we'll bring it back to the council for the first reading. Does that sound right? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any notes? Okay. All right, thank you, Liz. I just, that one's just important, I think, so, thank you, guys. Moving on to our next item, it is authorize the city manager to submit a drinking water state revolving fund planning grant, resolution 2022-12.
Brendan Berger, city engineer, has his staff report.
Excellent. Thank you, Merritt. Thank you, Buffy. So honorable mayor and city council, it's my pleasure to be here tonight to present business item 6B, which is the recommendation that the council adopt resolution 2022-12, authorizing the city manager to submit a grant for the City of Fortuna Water System Asset Management Plan.
It changed, whoops.
Wow, now I'm really cruising. Okay. So I want to begin here with a brief summary. The City of Fortuna is an urban water supplier that currently provides potable water to over 5,000 customers in the city. The system is composed of countless miles of water mains, a well field, four storage tanks, a number of water booster stations, in addition to various other minor infrastructure. Cities and utility providers, including the city, regularly engage in master planning studies to inform operations, projects, and budgets. And here in Fortuna, the last time we undertook this planning effort was in 2007. Since then, most of our projects have been completed, and several of those remaining are due to be completed within the current five-year CIP timeline. The city is at the point where a water master plan and update needs to be performed in order to identify project and budgeting needs over the next 10 to 20 years, and staff are currently working on developing the scope for this project. So before I talk about the specific project or the grant opportunity we're here for this evening, I wanted to share a brief slide here to help put the master planning effort into the broader context. As I mentioned, we typically enter into the master planning phase of work with the goal of identifying projects required to meet the needs of our current and future customers. This phase in the process is key as it acts as the initial step to identify the needs that can be planned for in our project CIPs and budgets. They can be designed by our teams of engineers, and they can ultimately be constructed. This is a living process, and therefore every 10 to 20 years, we need to repeat through the master planning step, the phase, in order to identify and develop the next generation of projects. So with that said, I want to touch a bit on what the Water System Asset Manager Management Plan project is, and what that means for the City of Fortuna. So with this project, we hope to evaluate the condition of our water system and its various components. We hope to perform engineering analysis to identify improvements necessary to meet existing and future city demands. We want to review our system's source and supply adequacy now and into the planning horizon. We want to evaluate opportunities to increase energy efficiency in our facilities, which would thereby reduce overall operational costs. And lastly, we, as I touched on briefly, we want to use the results of all of these steps, among the other ones involved in the process, to develop capital improvement program projects and planning level cost estimates to help guide our system improvements over the next 10 to 20 years. So last year, as staff began to initiate this project, it came to our attention that there was a funding opportunity through the state water board to complete planning level project activities for municipal water systems. The funding source is the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund, and it provides grant awards of up to half a million dollars that are free of local match requirements. The applications are straightforward, and staff in the past have applied for and received these exact types of grants for the city's wastewater project. After the grant program was identified, staff worked with our on-call engineering consultants to develop a full grant application and project scope, with the final step required to apply for the grant being the authorizing resolution that you were seeing here this evening. If approved, staff plan to submit the grant application later this month. Lastly here, as for the fiscal impacts, as I mentioned before, there's no matching funds required for this grant, and the only expenditures to date have been the cost to develop the grant application and the scope of work. If the city is unsuccessful in this particular grant application, staff will continue forward with the project and either use local funds or identify another grant opportunity if one is available. So with that, I'd like to end again with the staff recommendation, which is the council adopt resolution 2022-12, authorizing the city manager to submit a grant application for the City of Fortuna Water System Asset Management Plan, and I appreciate the time this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Brendan. Any questions?
Yeah.
All right, we'll start on that in this time.
Is this just a distribution, or is this also site development, storage, and distribution, and?
Yeah, we'd, we'd really look at all of it. We'd want to take it as an opportunity to start planning for potential future uses or areas that we would need to, that we would need to be servicing, you know, some, some areas that we think about typically, and that would be maybe the south end of town where there's some potential annexation or development potential. We're going to want to start to kind of dig in into the nuts and bolts in those areas and, and see what we're going to potentially need to plan for to be able to deliver, you know, services in those, in those areas. In addition to kind of the usual existing infrastructure stuff that we would look at as well.
Thanks.
Yeah, Brendan, um, what is a criteria to be successful on this grant? Is it competitive?
Um, in some ways, I, I do believe there is a scoring process. Um, these funding opportunities, they really try and make them accessible to disadvantaged communities, which Fortuna is, and that's part of the reason it would also be a no-match grant. I think if you have a good project and it's well-developed, it's pretty likely that you can get funded if there's a need for it. And my understanding is right now, the funding program has some capacity in.
Okay. And have we applied for this kind of a grant in the past?
We have. So for the city's wastewater compliance project, there is another program through the state called the Clean Water SRF that's targeted at, at treatment, water, wastewater treatment. And we've applied for a funding grant, I believe it was in 2017, for the same amount to perform the planning activities that are what they would consider pre-construction activities.
For the wastewater, but never, but never for the safe drinking?
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, would this, uh, if we're awarded the $500,000, um, do we have a engineering firm in mind, or would it go out for competitive bid?
We're still looking at how exactly that would be packaged. Um, we have a number of on-call consultants that would be capable of completing the work. So I think we would want to, as we package that together, assess, again, what our suite of options are and move forward from there. But it's not a foregone conclusion at this time.
Oh, so the application doesn't require that?
No, there, this application doesn't have qualifications written to the grant, no.
Anyone from the public having comments on this item? All right, seeing none, we'll close public comment, and I think I'm a little rusty. I think I forgot to take public comment on the ordinance that we were talking about. So anyone having comments on that one? Just to cover our bases? All right, thank you. Okay, moving on, we are ready for a motion.
I'll move to authorize the city manager to submit a drinking water state revolving fund planning grant and adopt resolution 2022-12, and read by title only.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Buffy.
Resolution 2022-12, a resolution of the city council of the City of Fortuna approving the application for grant funds from the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund. Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Losi?
Yes.
Councilmember Stanfield?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Long?
Yes. Thank you, Buffy. Our next item is a supplemental budget request for the purchase of four police vehicles that recognizes revenue from the USDA Community Facilities Grant.
Yes, thank you. Good, good evening, mayor and honorable city council. Uh, it's a privilege to present what I feel is an excellent opportunity to update PD's fleet of emergency vehicles, uh, through approval of a supplemental budget request, recognizing, uh, grant award from the Community Facilities Grant, which is, uh, uh, provided to us by the U.S. Department of Agriculture. So on March 28th, uh, the Fortuna Police Department received notification from USDA that, uh, we had been selected to be awarded a little, a little over $140,000, uh, from this particular grant. The estimated cost and outfitting of four new emergency police vehicles is estimated to be, uh, approximately $256,000 and some change. This would include, uh, four brand-new Pursuit Rated Emergency Explorer all-wheel-drive vehicles, um, including graphics and the emergency packages installed. So, um, vehicles are being purchased by Downtown Ford. Um, Downtown Ford has, as the council knows, a source while purchasing advantage, which essentially guarantees the best pricing as the city can use previously solicited bids from other governmental agencies. The fiscal impact is, uh, the purchase of the vehicles will cost the city $256,086.26, and staff is recommending that $115,286.26 come from the asset seizure fund, with the remaining $140,800 being funded from the USDA Community Facilities Grant. So, um, staff is recommending that council receive staff presentation and, uh, review questions, which I'm available for, and, uh, make a motion to approv- approve the SPR for the purchase of the four police vehicles.
All right, thank you, chief. Any questions for Chief Dave? Oh, go ahead. Tammy can start.
Ladies first.
Do you have any idea how long it'll take, because cars are in such shortage right now, how long it'll take to get these?
It's a very good question. Uh, the two that we are currently waiting for, I expected a while back, and our latest progress report is that we were supposed to receive the two new vehicles during the first week of April, so I'm hoping, uh, that we get those two any day, but I wouldn't pretend to guess on arrival for the fourth.
So that's two that we were, previously had ordered, and we still haven't received, and then we're going to do four more.
Correct. And the two previous, mayor, were from a different grant from USDA.
Okay, that was a while ago.
When we get those, are they already marked, like, Fortuna Police, or do we have to send them out after we get them to do that?
We do. Um, so we use local vendors to install the emergency package, which is our radio, our radios, our lighting equipment, um, all of the different things that go inside and out, and then we also use a local vendor for our graphics, uh, out of Arcata.
Are they backed up, too?
We've had fairly good luck, uh, with both Superior installs and, uh, the company that does our graphics. It's been a pretty quick turnaround, just actually getting him, them here to the City of Fortuna.
Any other questions?
Comments, other than anything? The price, just for those cars out the door, um, a little over $31,000 each. I'd like to buy one of those for that price. That's a great price. And so, you know, I, I know I've been, um, talking to chief about this, I've been talking to, to Merritt about this. Matter of fact, at one point, um, I, I mentioned several times about needing to get some of these Crown Victorians, Victorias, uh, replaced, because they are in just bad, bad shape. They look bad, it's a bad image for the city, it's a bad image for the police department. And I walked in, sat down, and said, Merritt, I want to talk to you about the police cars. Again, he says, Mike, you're killing me here. So I, I do apologize, but I am very excited that we're getting four new cars in addition to the two previous, uh, previously already ordered. This is great. It can do nothing but improve morale, not that morale's a problem, it's great, but it just improves image for the city and image for the police department. And I congratulate you for, for doing this, chief.
Thank you, Councilman Losi. I am very proud of the opportunity and, and just the award of the grant, and it's like you said, you know, really for the whole city, when the police vehicles are out in the community, it really is a branding and an imaging thing. are out in the community, it really is a branding and an imaging thing. It's going to be an absolute honor to get rid of some of those older cars which are showing, you know, and essentially, a lot of those cars, like the Crown Vics, are not being made anymore. So, you know, we're forced to upgrade. It's a good thing for the city to do so. And again, just very pleased to be able to present this to council tonight.
Any other comments or questions?
Well, I'd just say that I got to test sit in one of the Torres's and I would much rather be in one of these. And Mike's about the same size I am, so I don't think he'd fit any better in the Taurus than I do. But the Explorer, that's a good one.
Tad more of a room.
Yep. Especially when you got the mobile data terminal in there.
Well, and I appreciate the fact that we have the asset seizure funds because when we put our drug task force officer back into the county pool, that was huge for us, not only in taking the drugs out of Fortuna and being a lot more proactive, but opportunities like this have also been a huge benefit of that. So I'm really thankful that Measure Z has funded that position for us.
Absolutely.
Taking note myself.
One, one last thing. Has the push bar been pre-tested on these? The access point?
You're just wanting to pull my cord tonight. Yeah, that was a rare occurrence. What the councilman is talking about is a recent incident where we had a push bumper come off of the front end of an Explorer during a collision. And, you know, in the, over two decades that I've been in law enforcement, I have never seen at those type of speeds, the push bumper come off an Explorer like that. So I know that our city mechanic did a really good job filing a complaint with Ford Motor Company, just to kind of see if there was any issues with that particular vehicle. But, you know, it definitely was, was something that we don't run into often.
No, I saw the pictures that he had and the whole, it's crazy. It's a manufacturer's defect.
I believe it is.
Does anyone from the public having comments on this item? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. Did you have one more question?
Oh, I was just wondering if, how soon we have to actually start considering electric vehicles?
2035.
I know, and that's about how long we'll have these for.
Believe it or not, we're looking at the electric vehicles. It's one of the components of the climate action plan the county's been looking at. So when we're considering some of the other vehicles for other departments, like community development or planning and building, we're a little hesitant on our emergency vehicles. We don't know if they're going to have to go a long distance or what their charge date will be, but we are considering it for other city vehicles and looking at grants for charging infrastructure. So believe it or not, we're keeping an eye on that. And most other departments besides police can make use of electric vehicles, so it's a good option.
In pursuit, oops, my battery ran out.
Yeah. So, and I will just say too, we were, you know, we've been in close communication with the USDA, with the Community Facilities Grants are a great opportunity for funding. And we just recently had a new senior administrative assistant come on in Public Works and her first assignment was, I think she submitted about five or six grants, and this was one of the bigger ones. So we're getting some dividends for our, our new Public Works Administrative Assistant who's been jockeying a number of these, and we have about three or four more out for consideration right now. But that, there's a big slug of money that was going away, and so we quickly worked with each department, including the police, to try to get a number of grants in. So we're glad at least this one got funded and we have a couple more we're, we're waiting to hear back on.
Maybe while we're doing the remodel on the pod, we could put the infrastructure in without actually putting a charger in, so we're ready when it comes.
We are thinking about that.
We've already talked about running power over to the far side of the parking lot for it.
All right. Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll move to approve a supplemental, I'm sorry?
I said, I don't, I was just telling her I don't have it in front of me.
Oh, I'll move to approve a supplemental budget request SPR for the purchase of four police vehicles that recognizes revenue from the USDA Rural Assistance Grant and provides matching funds from the city's asset seizure and the city's general fund.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on to city manager's report.
So I'd just like to, yeah, if you want to throw it up there, I'd like to briefly review the upcoming meeting schedule, our next regular council meeting, and Buffy's going to put it up there, so it's easier for, for people on TV to see. But our next regular council meeting will be on April 18th at 6:00 PM. Our next planning commission meeting will be on April 12th at 6:00 PM. And then our next Measure E committee meeting will be on April 20th at 5:30. And that was a little bit delayed. We were waiting for some estimates on some of our costs so we could estimate what our needs are for, you know, so what our overall budget would be in the availability of Measure E funds. So that's why we delayed that from the original meeting of April 5th to April 20th, so we had a little bit more time to get some of those expenses in, in the budget. And then the next RONR Community Recreation Park District is at, on April 6th at 2:30 PM. And again, all our meetings now are live in council chambers, so if you want to attend, it's important to come down and be in council chambers. We still don't have an update. I know our city clerk, human resources IT director has been pushing our, our contractors to figure out when we can get the hybrid meeting scheduled, hybrid meeting equipment here, so that's something that we're working on and, and we're, we're very anxious to have. So just a few things I've been working on, the, I've been working with our outside legal counsel on updating the city's ordinance to include the requirements under SB 1383 in parallel with a draft update of the city's franchise agreement. I successfully was able to work with our community development department to submit the urban greening grant, urban greening grant last week, and so that was a, that was, that's for the potential acquisition of the parcel adjacent to the Vansel Forest parcel with the Vansel reservoir. And then we have a couple of exciting park projects that we're working on. One of those is we have an architect that we're working with to design the concept for upgrade, update for Newburg Park on the eight acres the city recently acquired from the McLean Foundation. Our hope is to incorporate two regulation soccer fields. So we've reached out to the Eel Valley Use Soccer, the Fortuna Union High School District, and we're, we're seeking to get their input on that conceptual design as we move forward. So that's pretty exciting. We recently received the draft environmental document for a development at the, the mill site in Fortuna, and so we're in the review process. We don't have anything to release yet, but soon we hope to bring a draft. They're on a very aggressive schedule, so they'll want to see that come to the council as soon as possible. So more details on that soon. And then in parallel, we are working under our Headwaters grant on the, the mill site specific plans. So we've had a number of meetings with our consultant and we're not quite ready to bring that to the plant, we'll bring that to the planning commission first and then the council, but identifying what the potential land use, infrastructure and the elements would be for the redevelopment of the mill site. So, you know, along with the specific development proposal that's there, we are also working on kind of a fallback, you know, what would the city like to see there in an ideal world? And one of the option, where there's going to be ultimately two options. One will include the distributions, or that's planned, and the other one would include, you know, just what the community wants to see. So both of those are coming along at the same time and the council will see something on the mill site soon. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Mayor?
I've got a quick question. I know that there were some requests for May budget hearing dates. Do we have any of those firmed up?
Yeah, so I think, Buffy, do you know, we didn't, did we send out the special meeting dates? I think there was a query that went out to the council.
May 16th and May 23rd, from 9 to 11.
So we didn't have those. I can put those special meetings coming up here, but those are a month out.
And those are set?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm glad to see the mill site development moving forward. It's great.
Yeah, no, it's, it's a, it's a potential, huge opportunity for the city, and so we're glad there's interest from developers looking at that, and we're, we're glad to have the Headwaters grant and be pursuing the reuse of that site as long overdue.
Excellent.
Anything else for Mayor? All right, moving on to, do we have any new future agenda items?
I have a question within that. I've gotten a lot of citizens contacting me regarding recycling, and now that COVID is somewhat lifted, are we going to be able to make a strong recommendation to our waste treatment facility operators to bring that back?
They opened one in Arcata.
The solid waste? Yeah, I did see in the news that Hambro was opening one in Arcata.
It's open.
Recology would have to seek at this point to recertify, and so we're very interested in that. And I think that might be one of the elements that we consider in our franchise agreement. It seems that Humboldt Waste Management Authority and Recology haven't wanted to do that independently, and so I think if that's something that is important to the community, we're going to have to make sure to address that as part of the franchise agreement. I mean, it's somewhat separate, but until we link it and, and tie it to the solid waste and recycling. So it's important, but right now that Recology has not indicated that they want to reopen that at this time.
Right. And so what's the timeline for that renewal? And I don't want to use the word leverage, but I want to, I want to make sure, are the messages clear? Our citizens want that program.
Yeah, so, so those will come back. It'll be somewhat of a, we're working through that. Ultimately, we'll bring a draft back to the council and we'll have a number of different optional services we'll be considering. The real driver on that is the timeline for SB 1383 compliance. We're trying to have a draft ordinance by, the first reading by June, and I'd like to bring both the ordinance and the franchise agreement at the same time. And the, the linkage is really that, you know, so the requirement is that we recycle, we reuse and recycle food waste to avoid the emission of climate, climate pollutants or greenhouse gases. And so we're past the date of compliance and we've been submitting the documentation to the state, telling them what, what, what we've done to be in compliance and when we expect to be in compliance. So our, my target right now is to have that in front of council in May and then have those for consideration and, and first reading of an ordinance by June, and, and that's what the expected timeline is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I can remember back a few years, a number of years ago now, that there was a, another recycler hauler that wanted to come down and set up, do recycling here in Fortuna. And then it was Eel River Disposal, and they got really excited about that and actually adopted a program so that to cover the material that was being recycled by another hauler. And so there's an option there that we can say, well, we want to let this person in if you're not going to do this.
Okay, we're probably getting way too detailed here for a future agenda item?
Well, I'm just talking about where he's at, so, yeah, I'm off, off the agenda topic.
We definitely are.
Jeremy opened the door.
Well, I think it'll be, I think it'll be good that we're back in public because usually solid waste does get a lot of public attention. And I'll just remind the council, kind of as an add-on to my staff report, that we do have outside council who has done this, worked with other communities that we were referred to. So I expect to have a draft in a couple of weeks and, you know, so I hope to see that back, you know, in probably three to four weeks.
So add to your staff report that because Arcata opened, our stores are no longer getting fined?
Oh, right.
That's pretty cool. That's big.
I was going to ask that, but you said we couldn't talk about it.
Mayor added to his staff report.
I was, I was curious how close the recycling center had to be to businesses.
All right, so moving on to council reports, Mike Johnson.
It's been, we didn't really have much in the last couple of weeks, but we did have the League of California Cities Redwood Division meeting and attended that. I think we were, you reported out on that the last time, I think.
No, we haven't had a meeting since.
That was after that? Well, it must have been my TCPW meeting, then it was before that. Transportation, Communication and Public Works, and that's where I heard the legislative update about the 24-foot ADU height limit, which is, I don't think it's a good thing, but, but the best part of the last two weeks was this past Sunday. I got to, as part of being a Kiwanis member, I got to work on the Bridgeville, Hydesville and Fortuna 4H spaghetti feed and work with the kids to get that done. And I tell you, there's a lot of enthusiasm and energy there and it made it great because I didn't have to run up and down the ramp at the vet's hall delivering and just hand it out the back door and they carried it down to the car. And they worked hard at it. And last year, Bridgeville sold more tickets than anybody else and they have the smallest 4H club. This year, Hydesville and Fortuna really stepped up the game, so there's no clear winner yet, but we'll know in a couple of weeks. But they all worked hard and they all fundraised, a lot of parents came out, and it was a good time and for a good cause. So that was the best part of the last two weeks.
It's always fun working with kids. Mike Losi?
Thank you. I attended a meeting on March 24th for Tammy at the Transit Authority. She was on a Measure Z meeting, and there was really nothing to report because the entire meeting was a closed session on the sale of the cell tower. So I gave my two cents and nothing to report on it then. And then just an hour later, I attended a Redwood Community Energy Authority meeting under, entered, a Redwood Coast Energy and under the Community Choice Aggregates Business, the Program Demand Reduction Incentive Program, also known as, wait for it, DRIP, D-R-I-P, was curtailed for the duration of 2022. It's an incentive program for certain types of businesses like grocery stores or, like high-energy users to receive up to 25 cents rebate per kilowatt hour for reducing energy during peak periods of energy use. But because of low enrollment by businesses, the program is curtailed for 2022, and RCEA will look at reinstalling that in 2023. We took up the 2022 Policy Platform, which is, follows the policy developments in both regulatory and legislative areas. And there's a board that looks at those areas and makes suggestions and changes. But because oftentimes legislature, the legislature will change a bill and there's not time because there, the, the board meets once a month and there's not time for the board to meet and then give the change or a change recommendation or suggestion back to the legislature, we've given that authority to the executive director to be able to talk to the chair and the vice chair to get approval for making those changes immediately, as opposed to having a, a meeting, a, a full meeting. Community Choice Aggregates with its energy program was launched five years ago next month. And this is an alternate to PG&E. We have, we provide, RCEA provides lower rates and it's an alternate for, for your energy to PG&E. And they, that was launched five years ago next month. As a matter of fact, I was on the council back then when it was instituted and I voted in favor of that, and I'm so glad I did. Hopefully, most of us in here are customers for the Community Choice Aggregates. The solid, there will be a planned celebration on May 1st, May Day, and it's going to be, I'm not sure where, probably Eureka, but some, you know, part, big party or something happening. And that's all I have.
All right, thanks, Mike. Jeremy?
I haven't had meetings for either of my committees since the last time we met. That, the thing that we will be working together now on is reviewing the documents from the full audit for F-Bid. And then Parks and Rec, I haven't met with that commission since our last meeting. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'll echo Mike's sentiments in that I'm really enjoying getting back to face-to-face meetings and public events, and I know that there's fundraisers happening here, lots coming up in the next month or so, that it, I'm grateful to our citizens for enduring and then our businessmen, businesses continuing to be as generous as they've always been. That's all I have to report.
Thanks, Jeremy. Tammy?
I also attended the California Cities Conference. It was so nice to meet with all of our Redwood Empire city, cities around there and catch up on everything that's happening in their cities. It was a good meeting. I still remembered a lot of those people after two years of not seeing anybody. But we had, there was a couple of interesting things they were talking about. One of them was the city over, Fort Bragg. Fort Bragg made a presentation. They're having a little bit of problems with the skunk train, trying to say that it's a railroad when actually they're saying it's commercial and they're trying to take property along the coast, which the city already has plans for. They're trying to eminent domain that, is that what they were talking? They're trying to eminent domain that, is that what they were talking about? So, that's pretty interesting, you know, the battle that Fort Bragg is going through right now, and may be in court on that. So we're keeping up on, you know, what that city's going through. Unfortunately, it's not good for, you know, for them, but we'll keep, keep you informed on that. We went over a lot of measures, whether we would support them or not, there's some interesting ones and some crazy ones, but. Let's see, was, I think that was most of, most, if I forgot anything, you can tell the rest on that. And then Measure Z Advisory Committee finished their last meeting. I'm not real thrilled with how they ranked us in there, so everybody who sees your supervisors, throw, you know, throw a hint out there that we really need to have those, those two officers ranked up there. They're really important to the city and to the whole county. Both of those officers work more than just the city of Fortuna, they both work in the county too, and they're both extremely important positions. And I think that's, that's all I have, and thank you, Mike, for taking that meeting for me, I couldn't be two places at one time.
So just piggybacking on Tammy's Measure Z, you know, we need to call all of the supervisors, not just our supervisor. So, please make those phone calls or send an email or something, reiterating how important those positions are and what we've accomplished in the last few years by having those, so Michelle's only one vote, so.
That's the SRO with the detective?
Drug Task Force.
Drug Task Force, okay.
Yeah.
And maybe contact could be made with the city of Rio Del, because like you say, the, both of those positions impact all of the Eel River Valley, including Rio Del.
Yeah, SRO feeds into all the feeder schools to high school, right?
Yep. So anyway.
Fifteen? And how can we get rid of an award-winning person like that?
Exactly. All right, yeah, it was nice to be in Ukiah with our fellow electeds throughout the county and to hear what's happening in their cities, and one of the things that I noticed is Fortuna seemed to have a lot more exciting things happening than some of the other cities. A lot of them were struggling, Willets is still kind of coming back from their whole bypass situation, and they talked about they almost folded as a city, and things are finally starting to come around because they passed a tax measure. Just different things, you know, like Fort Bragg's struggle and Willet's struggle, and then we were kind of over there going, Fortuna's doing really well. So, that was really nice to be in that position and share, you know, some of the things that we were doing here with them. I had an executive, executive meeting for REDAC to pass out some more money and loans, and then we had a visioning session, which Michelle was at also, and those are hard for me, because we all want to save the world, but REDAC has a lane, and what they do, they do well. And so some of the things that were, came up as top, you know, ranked importance to the community was housing and healthcare and infrastructure and all the things, but REDAC has a lane, and REDAC doesn't build houses, and REDAC doesn't provide healthcare, and so it's kind of like figuring out how to work that into something REDAC can maybe facilitate meetings or whatever, but how much do you want your executive director working on those things rather than getting the money out to the community? Because that's where we really make the difference. So, it was good to see everybody, it was good to be in person, it was good to see what people's concerns are, but really, REDAC has a lane, and they do it well, and my opinion is they just need to stay in their lane, but it was still good. Went to a groundbreaking ceremony for the Lutheran Home of the Aging, they're building eight more apartments right there in the Mountain View Village, so that was exciting to see how that organization takes their money and puts it back into the community rather than building a big, huge, fancy, massive church or hoarding all of their money in the bank. They actually put their money to use in their communities, and I just was really, that just really impresses me to see that kind of giving back. I'm supposed to have a, probably a Zoom meeting with Senator McGuire next week, and so his aide is calling me tomorrow, so if anyone has anything they would like to bring up or something, maybe let me know. I've got a kind of a list going for some things that I know about, but if you know about something that you want to ask him about or tell him about, let me know. I think that's it. So with that, we are going to adjourn to closed session. We have four items, conference with real property negotiator in accordance with Section 54957.8 of the Government Code, property is 190 Denz Moore Drive, the negotiating parties are the city manager Merritt Perry for the city, and the property owner under negotiation is price and terms. We have a conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, initiation of litigation pursuant to Paragraph IV of Subdivision D of Section 54956.91, one case. We have a public employee appointment pursuant to Section 54957 of the California Government Code, title Public Works Director, and a public employee appointment pursuant to Section 54957 of the California Government Code, title Police Dispatcher. Does anyone have any comments they want to make before we adjourn into closed session on any of those items? All right, seeing none, we will entertain a motion to adjourn to closed session.
Motion to adjourn to closed session?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and thank you all for coming tonight, appreciate it.